So in the meeting at six thirty three for the September eighteenth twenty twenty four, I mean, the Rocksbury.
Do you have a presentation?
Board of School Directors, it's like we just got the shorter agenda. Although we're happy to give you a few minutes to chat. I do want to just start the meeting with a reminder that we have a continuing vacancy on the board. We, one of the Roxbury seats, Kristen Getler, resigned in July and we are looking for a member of the Roxbury community to to step up and do some great service and help Brett out because Brett's carrying a big heavy load. If anyone is interested, you can shoot an email to the board, schoolboard@psbt.org or me at Jim Murphy at the same domain. And I'm sure that any of us would be happy to talk to you about it if you have questions. So please, please, if you're interested and a member of Roxbury, we are really looking for someone to fill that role. It's very important that Roxbury has full representation. Public comment, the public comment is a period where we take feedback and input from the public on whatever topic members of the public want to bring to our attention. We do not respond in real time, but it is very important to our decision-making process and to just letting us know about how people feel, issues we may not be aware of, et cetera. So even though we will not give you a response in real time, we are listening and it's very important to our decision-making process. Do we have any public comment? I'll start with the room. Anyone in the room? No. And online, I've not seen any hands. Okay, so we will next move to the approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is where we kind of approve en masse items like minutes of prior meetings, draft agendas, et cetera, that don't really require destruction unless board members feel an item should be pulled off and have questions about it or concerns. It allows us to do things more quickly. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Good. Any special other questions?
I have a point. The superintendent's report, let me grab it, has a little bit of information about the the transmission, transition for Roxbury Elementary students to Union Elementary. And there's been a lot of great work and a lot of positive responses and communications. The last bullet, though, that UES teachers called caregivers in the first two weeks to discuss how each child is settling into their classroom is is just not accurate. I think there have been a couple of conversations over the phone, and I know that there have been a number of emails and polite and kind and supportive dialogue via email, but there haven't been calls regarding each child. I just wanted to correct that one more point.
Yes. Pointing that out, Brett. Oh, Jim.
Hi, we received, I think, last week or something, a inquiry to the board about the cellphone policy of the school. And as a potential item for discussion, and I was just curious if that might be something we put on a future agenda. Thought I'd just tee it up for conversation.
Yeah, we could actually, well, actually, when I went to the high school open house, there is a, my understanding is a committee that's been put together.
Committee that's put together inside of the high school with, I think, eleven students are on it, several faculty members and Jason. I believe a few parents do not positive on that, though. And they are researching and looking into current use, what students think, what faculty thinks, and they're doing a whole process internally around that. The other thing I would say to the board is to, that that's going to get taken up by the legislature this year. Hands down, we just know it will. So we may just want to wait and see what the legislature does, what the legislative body does. Just another.
And is that something that, does that committee have a timeline, the one that's in the high school?
No, I'm not on it. So I don't, I don't know specifically, but I think Jason was planning an in-depth study.
Yeah, because that's the kind of thing we could ask to have as a presentation to the board when it's concluded.
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's what I was thinking too. I mean, my, my recollection of the open houses, he was planning to have it concluded sometime this year for
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, possible action. Now, and I, that's a subject that's near and dear to my heart, too. So my recommendation is that we give that committee a little time and then have, have some sort of have some sort of update and report. And then we also obviously will follow this in the legislature as well. But yeah, no, I think, I think that's, that seems like a good way to deal with it because it's obviously something of concern and there's already movement occurring.
Yeah. And for folks who don't know, there's a great article in Seven Days, not this week, I think, but last week, it was the cover story. And it has a lot of, it talks about our neighboring districts that have initiated bans and then interviews different health professionals, including my sister-in-law, who's a pediatrician in the South Burlington area. And so has a lot of really great information for us as well, as we continue to educate ourselves.
Yeah, no, and there's a lot of information on this generally. It's a big topic right now, so.
Libby, if legislature took action on it, do you think it would be for the upcoming school year?
I don't know. It's a good question. My hunch would be that they would be for, not this school year we're in right now, but usually with things like that, it influences the next school year.
Twenty five, twenty six.
Yeah.
I don't remember that bill from last year.
There was one for a while. Do you remember that bill? There was one that was trying to outlaw all social media in schools, including district usage and and cell phones. It was all encompassing.
And the use of technology for educational purposes. That's also referenced actually in this article, Seven Days.
Yeah, that kind of, that's what sunk it, all technology opt out.
Yeah, it's like S two eighty four. Yeah.
But usually with bills that don't require a whole lot of money, which this one, they say the next school year.
Yeah. I was just thinking like if there was a year in the future, then we would want to do our own deliberation now, but if it's next school year, then there's really less for us to look at.
If the outcome is that there's a statute on panning or limiting or whatever, and there needs to be a policy written, then the benefit of waiting is that the SBA will write that policy and the board will have something to work off of. They'll write like a, you know, a model policy.
Any more questions on the consent agenda? Just noticing that everyone's got on their cell phones, we're talking about cell phone.
I was just curious, Libby, I haven't seen the roots and wings yet in our, in just the meeting documents. Have they just not started?
The first Roots and Wings went out today. Okay, that's why. That's what I think. And when it came out, I said it to innocent, make sure it gets, this gets in the next board topic. Great. So it just started today. Thank you.
Excellent. Anything else? Was it ever?
I.
Any opposed? So we are skipping the student presentation there. Totally, totally fine with that. Okay, great.
We just lost our, we just lost our facilities director to a phone call.
Yeah.
You could do the policy monitoring right now.
Okay, let's do that.
Yeah, that's possible. Oh, he's back. Well, it's impossible. Start it. So mixing up the agenda a little. Do we have approval of three policy monitors reports, a twenty-three community engagement and vision, a twenty-four board and superintendent relations, and FM one oh one budgets? Do I have a motion to approve those policy monitor?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second it.
Discussion or questions? Was it ever?
I.
Any opposed?
Oh, wait, sorry. Looks like Tim raised his hand.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, just one of them said we had a little bit more work to do. I think it's the community engagement and vision. I was just wondering, what exactly is that? I'm not sure I I followed that.
Yeah, so last summer, the board worked on our top three priorities. And we solidified and really refined two of the three, the academic excellence and the belonging and wellness. So they have, they like flow from our vision, they have, here's what we mean by these things. And then they have specific indicators of success that we can measure. And then our third one, community engagement and communication, we have it, it, it fits within our vision and is flowing from the visioning process that we did leading up to that work last summer, but we don't yet have indicators of success. And the Equity Committee, I think in the spring, volunteered to take on the like, we'll draft this up and bring it to the board. So that's why that's not complete yet. And Equity Committee is working on that now.
Okay, awesome. Thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions? Collins? Was it ever? Any opposed? Great. Enter.
Even. So you have received the facilities report. Any specific questions that you have?
I know.
Yes, Joe.
The three acre, can you explain what that is? Is my understanding, like, if we don't do it, there's some sort of penalty or something?
Well, we have to do it. It's new stormwater policy, about three, four years old. And it is any piece of property over three acres has to meet fifty percent of new stormwater regulations. So the state actually allocated money to do that project. So, and it actually started back in the day with Michelle. So we're all set to that. They had some problems with the bidding on their end. So the bids came in really high and were really late. So they're just going to rebid it this, this fall, late fall, early winter for next spring.
And does it change like parking?
No, it basically enlarges up the stormwater collection area that we have.
Other questions, Brett?
There's there are there's something about a well protection plan, an RBS, that needs to be completed. Is that something that can be completed by you and your team or is that a?
We're working with Engineering Ventures on that. Basically, every, there's different inspections and things, but we are working with the state in, on, on that, updating that. That's, we're actually meeting down with the engineer, I'm meeting with the engineers next week on that one. So it's in the process. So it's really just updating what was in place. But it's, it's complete. It's a, usually every three years, you just sort of do a random, not random, but a very quick. We contacted people, we know everybody, nothing has changed. This is a real comprehensive. How do you shut the system off? How do you turn it back on? What's our contingency plans, things like that?
Is that something that you would recommend is done on a five-year window, ten-year window, or?
No, this is, this comprehensive because it's, it's just because the well was put in, well, back in the eighties, I think. It's just been so long and the paperwork over the years has sort of thinned out. So we're just sort of pulling the paperwork. We, the school district and the state are pulling our paperwork back together.
Thank you.
Yeah, but it'll be good to have an updated, some of the, you know, some of the contacts, the engineer that put the last report, it's not even in business anymore. So it's, it's a good thing to have done.
Yeah.
I have, I have a few questions, but first I just wanted to say thanks, you know, take the opportunity to say thank you because the report is incredibly comprehensive and it's such a great and valuable resource for us to keep coming back to throughout the year. And also for leading up the team that is keeping our buildings in such great shape, as you noted in the report, even with all of the challenges we had last year, really moving things forward and keeping them to be like one wonderful places to work and learn.
They work very hard.
Yes, yes, they do. So first want to take the opportunity to say thank you. And then I do have a few questions. We, the deadline for spending all of the Esser money was, is this month, right?
It's at the end of this month. We're closing out the projects for the thirtieth. We got the invoice for the union work. It was, I want to say on time and on budget, a little bit, little under budget, but we ran into a few more expenses over at the Main Street than we anticipated, or we're planning for, I should say, but I think it's going to sugar out well. Whether we have, we have, and we have to close the projects out by the thirtieth. If we have extra money, there is an opportunity to earmark it. We have to work with the state a little bit on that and really define it like we want to buy this and we just can't get it in the next two weeks. We're going to get it in two months from now. They don't want it to drag on forever, but we'll know by the end of the week where we sit with regards to that.
How much, like, how much is left?
If there's any leftover, but I'm glad to see that, that essentially they hit the, hit the budget that we were planning for on the first, on the union. So my hope is it's the same and hopefully we, ideally, we don't have much money left over because we do now, you know, that means they spent the money that we allocated to do it on the work they anticipated, so.
Right, we want to spend all that money.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you get, did we get a chance to do anything to the playground at MSNS?
We replaced, there's an image in there, that old, the old retaining wall that was falling down.
Okay.
We replaced that. We put in new sidewalks and up in the corner outside the cafeteria, that we had some picnic tables during COVID. They were great. The, the school really liked them, but it was sort of sitting on dirt and they got kind of muddy and messy. So we put in a proper set of stairs and, and some proper drainage up in that area. So people keep their, their clothes dry.
Okay, great. And then I wanted to also ask about the windows because it's been on the list for a while. And I did the math to figure out it would cost about two million dollars to replace every single window, right?
I think that's the, that would be, I think if you put that out to bid, that's probably not a bad ballpark.
Yeah.
If you said, we're going to do them all at once. If you start breaking it and going over years, that number falls apart very quickly. But that's, that's a good num, but a good scope to keep in mind, that it's a big project.
It's a really big project. And if we, it also looks like in our capital plan that it's really, they are really the only things we're planning on spending money on in the capital plan. Is that correct?
Well, I do think that we need to work, I need to work with the building and energy committee to really talk about that because we were fortunate that we did earmark some money for roofs and we took care of the cafeteria roof and the auditorium roof. So we're not going to be coming in on Monday morning to wet floors anymore, certainly in those two. But we do need to think about the roof here, the rest of this main roof at the high school. It is not currently leaking, but it is at the end of its useful life. So I think that's a good conversation for the building and energy group to really weigh those pros and cons.
Okay.
What's the next, where's our focus next?
And what would your opinion be? Would you say roof?
My opinion would be to listen to the group and find out what everybody else's opinion is.
You're the expert. I think the group is going to want to know what you think.
I, I guess I, I think there's more things to talk about and just going to make sure everything and come on.
How, how urgent of a need is the windows update?
The Union Elementary, we need to stabilize the windows, the paint on the windows in the inner courtyard. We have pre-K kids in there. Those windows are, the paint is bad, old and bad, and it gets beat by the sun. We actually, when we did our inspection, we went back there and our recommendation, and I worked, I talked with the state department of health of, you know, we aren't going to be able to scrape and paint those windows. So I do a weekly walk around for, to look for paint chips and things like that to see if they're deteriorating even worse. And fortunately, this was the first year it was ever, ever brought up to our attention and it, I've been doing it, always said, we weekly walks around the inside perimeter there. And it hasn't, it's not like things are flaking down onto the ground. One quarter inch, less than a quarter of an inch chip today.
Okay.
So, but that, that, if not replacement, at the very least, the paint needs to be stabilized back there. And I have an appointment with a painter just to get their sense of what, what are we looking at here? Because it's what they do that all the time. They, this is, they're lead certified and they know what is needed to get in there, scrape to, to not resistance, I forget the term they use, but scrape it, paint it, prime it, you know, and get it stabilized.
Okay.
That I think definitely, that we definitely need to do this coming summer.
Yeah.
The roadside MSNS windows are also a priority for the second floor.
Paint or replacing? Painting is less expensive, right?
Yeah, but it's, yes. Oh, yeah, 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 certainly, certainly.
Yeah. We need to call that custodian to get them open. Yeah, that's not good. And also I just, what I'm picturing when we're talking about replacing windows is like, do we have kids and teachers sitting in like freezing cold rooms or, you know, in the winter?
So it's interesting that they, the, the, the philosophy on leaking windows has changed since COVID. It used to be, now people look at it and go, oh, good, you're getting more fresh air. First time I heard that, I was like, what? But and, but no, no, we pump a lot of heat. Now, is the most energy efficient thing to do? No. But again, even if you have the most modern building, you bring twenty kids in from recess on a March day where they're all hot and sweaty, you're throwing open the windows. You know, you're, you're doing things that you wouldn't do on paper in a school building.
Because you're in real life.
Because you're in real life.
Yeah. So. Yeah, I was just thinking about the learning environment.
Yeah, 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 no, no, no.
And then there's an awful lot of projects on the upcoming projects list, which I think is great that you just are, this one, if there's one place, we're tracking it. But do you have a way of prioritizing? Like, are there any tiers?
No, again, I think that's a, that's a building, building group discussion. I think that health and safety is the very first. That's, that always takes precedence. Then anything that's going to disrupt learning and time in the classroom is second, and anything that's aesthetic is unfortunately third.
Yeah.
Says the architect.
That's, I mean, and that's the reality. But that's the reality of the windows, you know, leaking roofs are priority.
Yeah, I can see that. I can see that. I just have a couple more questions. We had, have had a number of situations last year where the elementary school couldn't be in school because of pipe bursting. Is there anything that we can do at the building location or working with the city to?
Well, fortunately, well, fortunately, though, our weak link was fixed last year. So one of those was us.
Okay.
The rest of those are out in the street. And that, but the good thing is that, that one weekly, it's been fixed and that shouldn't be an issue for another sixty years. But now, not really, nothing we can do.
Okay. And then I noticed that you have, you made a note that the softball field was just, it's, we can't replace it. Does it mean that we are, we have no?
There is no softball team here. It hasn't been for a couple of years and I don't believe there's an, I think that there will be.
Okay.
There weren't enough girls and they can play on thirty two's too.
Okay, all right. And then just one last question. I saw that there's some work has gotten started on the safety updates and the improvements to the track. Can you give us a ballpark on what we've spent so far and how much is left of what this board set aside?
I don't want to do that right now. It's off the top of my head because.
Not money amounts.
Oh.
Just sorry, what happened?
At the top of my head, we spent about a hundred and fifty thousand, I'm thinking.
Okay.
We've got the new throwing pads and the safety netting is here and it's concrete is there. We're just waiting to move some soil offsite and then we'll resee that area. So the new throw, discus and shot put pads and safety netting is ready to go. The end line fencing for the, basically for keeping the runners safe during the cross season, we have all the equipment. We're going to, we decided to wait until after the soccer season because we have to shift the field a little bit. We wanted to make sure that it works before we ended in with fencing with big screens or big fifteen foot screens. So that stuff is onsite. Sound system improvement has been made. We've got running mats for the long jump pit. And we've been working with the engineers on the layout and I think we've got a pretty good layout that we've all walked, myself, Jim, Nathan, Matt Lake, we all went out and said, okay, again, when we plant these big end line fences, evidence, that's set. We're not going to dig those up and move them. So we went out and they were very comfortable with it and I think we're in good shape there. We just have to get some permitting and some documents for, for bidding that and see where we end up.
Do you think that we, and it's okay, you can't answer this tonight, but do you think that we have enough allocated to do what is they, the rest of these my, you know, safety upgrades and those kinds of ones?
I think we're, I think we're not in bad shape. I don't think we're in bad shape. We're certainly not going to fall short. I mean, I think the, like I said, the safety improvements with the throwing events, the end line net, like the, you're going to see improvements for sure.
Yeah.
Do we have, do we get everything? No, but we get most of it? Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
And so, and we're in a good position to finish it all.
Good. Thank you.
Big.
Got some high school questions. It's the first one on the note about the track and the upcoming projects. It says for the high school track replacement, one point eight million allocated. Is that just leftover?
Oh, I, yeah, is that deep in the body there?
Page ten.
Oh.
One of those.
Okay, yeah, no, I apologize. That, that was, that was up there.
Okay, thanks. So, yeah. And then on the, on the like floodproofing.
Yep.
And I'm sorry, I'm sorry that I can't remember the status of this, but has electrical service been brought up or is that?
It is, it is right in my old office. They've, they've got, they're going to do the final swap over, over the in the first week of October when we have our, our days off here. So that'll be, that will be completed. That, that move will be completed by then. FEMA has approved us for about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of flood mitigation for the basement. Flood doors, sump pumps, getting, putting in, either getting rid of the old bulkhead down there or putting in a waterproof one. But anyway, they've, they've approved that hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We'll have to come up with ten percent matching on that, but.
So twelve thousand.
Yeah, yeah. And we've received most all of our, we've received all of our allocation from FEMA, about a hundred and seventy thousand. We should be getting another fifteen percent because they hit some sort of threshold where they take it from twenty-five to ninety, or from twenty-five percent obligation on the owner's part two, only ten percent. So you had to hit some sort of limit, but they, they made that, that cross. So we're at ninety percent now.
So it's the last sensitive thing in the basement, the boiler room?
Yeah, that's, that's basically the only things down there now, boiler room and dirt.
And I think Eric, I remember you had an idea about potentially water proofing that room.
Yep.
Is that part of the?
That's part of that hundred and twenty thousand.
Okay, great. So that sounds like you made a lot of headway.
That'll be done next, it's supposed to, it's supposed to be eighteen months after the event, but we're going to, we're going to get an extension so we can do it during the summer.
Awesome.
Just have a quick follow-up to that. So how much, whatever repairs and floodproofing kind of things we've done, have we had to pay for?
Well, we haven't done any mitigation work yet, so that would be.
Or what will we need to pay for, just that twelve thousand?
That's, that's what FEMA will pay us. If the building group wants to add on to that, that's a different story, but that's what, that's what's planned right now.
Right, because it was insurance and FEMA has covered everything else.
I don't think I'd say everything else, but. I don't think I'd say everything else, but the lion's share of everything else. Yeah.
I'm trying to get a ballpark of how much of a financial strain was the flood on the district.
That's better answer for.
Yeah, okay.
Good question that we can find the answer.
Okay, great. It's something that I think is important for us to consider as we think about the future of this building or a new building or whatever, you know. All the, all the wrestlings we have to do.
So I think, I think the facilities committee, um, when it gets going again, is going to have to wrap its head around like, you know, where we are, are at now. Um, and what the, the report that we, um, that we commissioned said, um, just in terms of like, you know, what would happen if we had a flood similar to the July twenty twenty three flood? Or something worse than that. Um, cause Andrew's made a lot of improvements, you know, a lot of headways since then. So I think we're in much better condition.
Andrew, am I right in figuring this with homeowners that, um, you can only access FEMA money once?
Yeah.
Does that work?
I believe that is true that, that, and, and certainly if you don't do, I believe, will allow, if you do mitigation work and something happens again, I believe you have access to it. If you don't do the mitigation, they don't pay you twice. But that's.
Something we should probably get squared, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that was part of, um, the, the folks who presented to us, um, was it engineer ventures or? I feel like they had a piece in there about like, there's like a timeframe or a percentage amount if you invest back into the, so there might be something in there.
Well, that's another, that's an issue with having to flood proof the building, right? If you improve the value by a certain amount or invest a certain amount of the value, then.
Every time you're putting money into, there's a certain threshold that the city has put in place. And if we hit that threshold, then any kind of improvement here, whether flood related or not, like the roof work would be considered toward that threshold. That once you reach that threshold, then you have to flood proof or you have to raise or something like that.
And it's cumulative, I think.
Yes.
The track equipment, we're purchasing equipment and the, the, there, the original, there was a little bit of talk about a, a structure to store um, equipment. Can you kind of help us understand the um, current plan for storing what equipment we have and
Right.
It's vulnerability to.
Well, I'll be honest, that's sort of, we have, we have, uh, we have the large connects, we have the shed. Uh, the, I'll tell you the truth, we kicked the can a little bit on that because we, the, the biggest piece of storage that, that we would need would be for the pole vaulting pads and all that. And that one with the group, Jim and, and Matt and, and I, that piece was sort of the lowest priority that all these other things uh, needed to take, but they don't really need that much storing. It really was the mats for the for the pole vault that would push us over the, over the edge of what we got, what we've got now. So without knowing that that wasn't going to happen this next year, um, we, we haven't put any more thought into that, but um, once we get through this three acre stormwater and the track permitting, you know, every roof we put out here has an effect on stormwater. So we'll, we'll have to start pulling that piece together.
And because we have no place to store them.
Well, we don't have, we don't, well, we haven't been doing pole vaulting yet.
Right, okay.
So it was, it was a sort of, we don't have it now. So that's the last one to sort of bring up to speed.
Got it.
We're bringing, bringing on to the campus.
I think it's been a while since we talked about it, but the, the bus, um, the middle school bus, like traffic, is that still?
That's, you, you know better than I. I haven't heard it. I haven't heard much this year.
I think the answer to that is it is what it is. Yeah. There are no answers to.
Cause we'd have to lose the front lawn basically to like create a bus lane, right?
Yeah, and you lose most of it just to the turning, not even to parking the buses.
And yeah, backs up traffic and it's a bit of a mess when the buses come in.
But I think they, I think over the last year or two, they've, they've been better and.
We've got our systems.
Yeah, quickly loading and quickly unloading. And so it's, it's, I think they queue up before the, the, before they turn on the red lights. And when they turn on the red lights, they're.
Yeah.
Off, they go system.
I've been in the mix of that in the mornings and it's really not that, you know, you're waiting, but there's also kids getting off of a bus. So let's make sure that this, the number one priority is that their safety, they can get to school, not necessarily that I need to get home from my commute. It's not, I, my perspective was not too bad.
Well, I think it's great that there's that crossing right there.
Yeah.
Cause I do definitely, there's like a lot of like blind spots and people coming in. Those of us who live in the neighborhood know that at eight AM, you don't go that way.
Yeah, go down, that's right.
But I do think it would be a lot harder if there wasn't an actual crossing or they're actually helping kids. Cause they'll cross those side streets and I think that helps a lot. He's very good about making sure that.
There's nobody who loves their job more.
We're gonna.
Yeah, Andrew, I, if I recall, after the flood last uh, summer, there was some like really intensive air sampling um, in here, uh, and if I remember correctly, um, fairly quickly that the air was, was judged to be high quality.
Say it was never even judged not to be good.
Um, is there any continual um, air sampling? I, I don't think I saw anything in the, in the environmental.
No, it's not, it's not a standing item. When we have an issue, we, we actually had a, a, a bit of a a roof leak from down below and this, in this room. Um, and we got it dried up and fixed and all that. And we had the air sampling and whenever somebody brings a concern to us, uh, Sue, Sue had a question. We had it come down last week and, or two weeks ago. We did some more. We haven't got the report yet. I've heard the results are good, but I don't have the official report. So it's sort of as a when needed.
Um, and then I noticed there was a, at the end of your, your note, the sort of executive summary. Um, you mentioned the, the needs ahead that we've talked about. And then you said unknown environmental concerns. And so what are the needs around unknown environmental concerns?
Um, that's just, that, that's really a, a piece of, we got PCBs. This, this year, there's a lot of that kind of stuff happening in the school. So I don't anticipate anything, but you never know. You don't know.
Gotcha. And when you say we got, you mean there's the PCV testing that we may be doing in the future?
That's been bumped to next summer. Yeah. So it was supposed to happen this summer, but it got bumped to next summer, summer twenty five. Yeah. Um, it's, it's bumping so much that you can't, the website isn't, doesn't keep up with the bumping at this point. Um.
It will be bumped again.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure. So, um, you know, the windows, the, the PCBs, though, we'd say I'm testing all the water again this year and all those kinds of things. Those are, I don't anticipate anything, but they're out there and, and we have to address them in a month.
And then I also noticed at the end that there's still a head custodian position open at the high school.
Yeah.
Is that, is that a, a concern of yours that that position remains until?
It is. Um, we are very fortunate that Tom Allen steps into that role. I really wish he had someone to take the burden a bit. Um, but, um, but Tom is a believer that you gotta get the right person in here. We just don't need a person. It's a very, you gotta deal with.
Yeah.
Everything. And um, it's, it's, we're always looking. He's always recruiting. He's always looking for folks. Um, and he is by no means not wanting to give up the role. He's always just making sure that finds the right person. Cause you have to be technical, you have to be personable, you have to be a manager of people, you have to be a manager of time. It's, I don't envy him. I respect him greatly for what he does.
No questions?
You have any specific questions, Lena?
Great, thank you Andrew. I was always much appreciated.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, no, and I just want to read her right now. This comment that the, it's one of the most comprehensive reports we get. So I appreciate it. Anna did a fantastic job of giving us precise language about what we need to do next.
Uh, yeah, oh, good, okay.
Kind of, it was the, it's one or the other or both?
Both. You first one, first you give the, the justification and then we approve the justification, then we actually move into executive section. So do I have a motion for?
I move to find that premature general public knowledge regarding the board's confidential attorney client communications made to provide legal services to the board would clearly place the board at a substantial disadvantage if discussed in public.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or other laws? All the favor?
I.
You opposed?
I move to enter executive session for the purpose of confidential attorney client communications made to provide legal services to the board under the provisions of Title One, Section three, one, three, A, one, F of Vermont statutes, confidential attorney client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the body.
Second.
Second.
Discussion questions? All the favor?
I.
I, any opposed? Great. I think we are off to, and I just want to make a quick note that um, that we go, we are going into executive session because this is what we do for every time we have attorney relations. It protects our confidentiality. It doesn't mean that we're not being transparent, but uh, for certain things, including uh, discussions with attorneys um, on really any matter we go into executive session.
Yeah.
It's just, it's a good practice.
And we are going to come back.
Mostly they're in the, oh, tip saying the audio was barely good. That could be because Jim was mumbling. Can you hear me better, Tim?
No, it's, I'm having some issues. Um, I'm not, I'm not sure why. Sorry about that. It's just like a hum in the, in the machine.
Yeah, but I think Jim was mumbling. Me, you're doing better.
Okay. So, the, um, so, uh, forgive me if Jim just said some of these things, but it helps to ground me to get to maybe review some of that. But so two weeks ago, we saw five or six options of how of educate, possible educational uses for Roxbury Village School. And given that there's a number of different directions that any one of those could go, we thought it would help to guide board decision making to set some parameters for ourselves. So the, the top three that we're proposing and we wanted to see if board members think there are other key parameters to set are, does the district have a need? Um, and that, so need parameter, a finance parameter, like how much financial obligation and tax implication should we take on for this? And then the third one is what does the Roxbury community think about um, the different options that we've laid out, including, and then in addition to that, the option of the town buying the building for a dollar um, from the district. So I went ahead and we have, um, we started a questions document couple of meetings ago called the RBS buildings, building questions. And I went ahead and highlighted the ones on there that are the three parameters that we want to set for ourselves as a board, um, to help us make the decision. And um, we don't have to, for tonight, what we were just want to do was put those parameters out there and see if there are any other main ones that board members thought should be included. And then, um, basically task individual board members that if you have questions that would help you answer that question, like need or pressure point. An example I could, I could think of is when it comes to the um, magnet school, we have a, um, we have a study that was done a while ago on a language immersion school. Is that enough to answer your question about whether or not we have a need? Or do you have other, you know, are there other ways that you, other information you'd like in order to help you answer that question? Um, yes or no? That option one, yes, there's a need in the district or option three, no, there's no need in the district. Um, what does the Roxbury community think? We'll be able to get a lot more of that, get that answered um, in, you know, at least partially next board meeting when we're in the, in Roxbury and are going to set aside some of our time for, of the board meeting as a community forum to hear from the community. Um, but maybe there there's other information you would be looking for in order to be able to help answer that question. And then what is the financial obligation or tax impact the board will put, ask the community for, um, is another one that we have to decide, especially given that we one of, I mean, the main reason we decided to bus kids from, um, uh, from Roxbury to attend union was a big budget pressure. So I, the, um, before we go any further, Zed, want to have any questions about these parameters? I like.
I, I, just a comment on maybe some sequencing too, cause I, because the financial obligation tax impact is at the bottom.
Yeah, they're not really in an order. Yeah.
And you know, for instance, if we know that a certain type of magnet school, it's going to cost a lot of money. Like, let's not do a detailed study on what do we need at first, because that might not be the best use of resources. For a lot of money that we don't have.
I think, I think we should add, um, not, we're, we don't just care about what Roxbury community members think. We, we, I believe we care about what all of the community think. And so I would just maybe edit number three to certainly Roxbury community members um, have a, a, a larger interest because of the fact that the building is in their town. And it's still something I think other community members um, have feelings about as well.
Um, to that point, um, was this community forum, which uh, Montpelier obviously is welcome to, to join in remotely, but is this the only community forum or will there be a second community forum of some kind in Montpelier? Maybe not necessarily on a typical school board schedule. I don't know what that might look like, but time aside for people to remote in or to come in to Montpelier. Or would we, I don't know how we would ask the community if that's something that they would want, if the promoting into Roxbury is not enough of an opportunity. I'm not sure.
Yeah. Right now, that's the only planned community forum. Um, and then we are going to open up a I'm just like picking a frame of time, two week public comment period where we'll do like, you know, it'll be a pop up on our website and there'll be, it'll be all over social media. Fill out this quick form to tell us what you think. Um, as a way of trying to reach as many different people in different ways. Um, and as you said, anybody can zoom into the community forum that will be in a couple of weeks. Um, we also have, and this is getting to another agenda item, so I don't want to go there yet, but we also have the Fall Festival in next Saturday where we could use that as a place of gathering information on this question. Um, but I think, um, what I heard Scott say is maybe we have a fourth parameter that is what does the Montpelier community think? Because I think it makes sense. Not that we want to be separating our two towns within this broader community very often, but given the point you made, Scott, about the Roxbury community, this is a building that is in their community, rather than just getting rid of Roxbury on, in that line, I, I would add another question that, that's.
All right, Tim.
Uh, I'd be curious, uh, I think like three of the five opportunities were regional in nature, uh, that were presented last last meeting. And they may be, they may have been theoretical and there's not a desire among the region, but I, I was struck by the fact that, you know, there's, there's this trend toward regionalization in the state generally. And so to the extent our sort of regional, um, peers are interested in a collaboration along the lines of one of the options that Libby suggested. I think I'd like to know that. So maybe it's some sense of, you know, for the BOCs or the CBCC or the magnet-type school. Are there others out there, or is it just sort of a non-starter generally? I'd kinda be curious about that.
So that's an example of an info, piece of information that we would be trying, we wanna get in order to try and answer that question.
Right. Is that what we're doing here, or?
Yeah, yeah. What I'm just doing is we're gonna, we're listing those so Libby can go and do a little bit of research.
Okay.
Rather than trying to answer all of them tonight.
Right, yeah, no, absolutely.
Yeah.
I would also, with that question, I would wanna know what the board needs as evidence of an answer either way.
Is it, right, is it like survey of the superintendents, or is it enrollment numbers, or yeah, what would, what would help?
I mean, like, from my end, you know, for the CBCC, it would be probably talking to the CBCC. I know they're looking for other facilities, right? Some, either that entity or the, um, sent, the districts that make it up like the superintendents, you know, is this a non-starter? Is this something interesting? I think not looking for a, a deep dive. I mean, the BOCs I thought was the most interesting potential uh, idea, and I know, Libby, you said that there is some opportunity for study there. Um, I think at this point, we're not looking for, I, I'm not looking for like some kind of full-blown study or something, just sort of a gut check from the entities that would be potential partners.
Yeah, I think that's what my, I understand your question. Um, my, what, what would the board want is like I can write an email right now and have an answer for the board by eight o'clock tomorrow morning from superintendents. And telling you that, I wanna make sure that that is what the board wants. CBCC, you have a board member who's on the CBC board. Would, would you want the board of CBCC to discuss it? Like, that's a higher level conversation. I'm just curious as to what, what kind of, what, for lack of a better word, proof. I don't know how to say that.
I mean, I guess it depends what we're doing here. It's like, I think it's a iterative conversation. If there's an expression of interest, then maybe we would wanna follow that up. If there's, if everyone's saying these are all terrible ideas, then I don't think we need a lot, but I don't, I guess it depends on what the decision we're making with the information is. But these were presented as options, so I'm just trying to, I, I, I still haven't figured out how we assess them unless we talk to the regional partners that would be part of them.
I agree with, uh, Tim's direction, and it's similar, and I feel the same way I felt when we saw the presentation is, I, I need to know, um, like, uh, what, what the potential educational purposes, the world of them are. Um, and I don't think the ideas necessarily will come from this board. So what that means to me is like, however one advertises a school building and asks, you know, what educational purpose would you, would you potentially use it? You know, deal with this building? That's what I would like to do, to see what ideas are out there.
So hypothetically, Libby could send an email to superintendents, or maybe not hypothetically, to fellow superintendents in the area and say, this is a, this is a resource of our district. If you were the superintendent in my district, what would you do with this building? Is that what you're saying? I'm just trying to rephrase.
I mean, I, if I was gonna go like rent out an apartment, an apartment, I know how I would advertise it, right? I don't know how to advertise a school building. Um, I kinda don't think it's an email to the superintendents. I think that's one limited channel, and you also have to be very careful about how you phrase a question to them. So I'm thinking broader, like, how does one tell the world that there's this building available in this, you know, beautiful small town, and do you have an educational purpose for it that you would propose to us?
Yeah.
I, I, I I wonder if that's, um, does that not, uh, is that the work of the board, or is that the work of the, of? I don't, I don't, I don't know. Is that the, is that the, is that the board taking away the right of the town to determine what is best for the town? If we were to get a request, if we were to put out an RFP, if we got a proposal for I don't know what kind of educational school or educational structure or educational thing, whether it's mental health related or whatever it might be related, is that not taking, you know, is that not taking agency away from the town? And is that what we wanna do or not?
There's a tricky chicken and egg thing here. I mean, I, I obviously think number three to me is the most important thing on there. Um, but that being said, maybe then you don't really do due diligence on finding out what's out there. You just kind of rule out the possibilities, which is sort of the direction we're heading in. And then you just sell, you just move ahead with the dollar offer to the town of Roxbury, cuz then the Roxbury, town of Roxbury can really get what it would like.
And, and I, I think I'd like.
I mean, I'd like to filter this through what I think the spirit of the agreement was, and I think the spirit of the agreement was, you know, Roxbury had been running the school for a long time. And when the merger happened, Roxbury essentially gave us the school building with the idea that we would run RVS as part of our district for four years, and if it didn't work financially otherwise, and we chose to close the school, we would give that building back unless we had an educational need that would kind of further that use as a school. I'm not sure it was an invite to do a broad fishing expedition for whatever educational use we could find out, putting out an RFP, seeing if someone out, you know, in the four corners of New England wants it as an educational use. I, I think the spirit was that, you know, say we, you know, say, say we had the money to do an immersion program and the study came back saying that would be a great idea. It would give us latitude to do something like that, but I'm not sure it was a, like, let's scour the four corners of New England and see if someone, someone, someone somewhere out there has an idea for an educational use. And I kind of like Tim's idea on some of these regional things. I think a quick email to some superintendents who might be interested, or to, I'm forgetting.
Jody.
To Jody, uh, uh, just saying, we, we thought about this, like, is this something we should have a further conversation about, or is this kind of a non-starter with you? Just to do diligence, do diligence around some of those kind of more obvious ideas, I think makes sense. I don't know if it makes sense to really do a deep, deep dive and just see if there's, you know, someone in northern Maine wants to buy that and turn that into a Waldorf.
Well, which is what I think Tim was saying, is like, let's start by asking just around the region if they, if, if any of these options
Makes sense.
Make sense, or if they, if they in their, with their own, like, these are the needs of my district hat on, could say, oh, yeah, if there was a outdoor education-focused school here, I could definitely see a large population of my, you know, may, maybe there that exists and we just don't know it yet cuz we haven't asked. So I think, but, and so then that would be like, okay. Well, given the other parameters we've set for ourselves, financial obligation, what does the Roxbury community think and the Montpelier community think? Maybe we would then go pursue that if there was interest from around. But starting by finding out that interest, I think is useful.
So, uh, Libby, I, I realize that you created this as a presented, the, I'm looking at the presentation from two weeks ago. You created this as a, as a starting point for the conversation for our board, but how much of this would be sort of ready for prime time, if you will? Like, if we were to share this and say, do any of these four or five options, Northfield or Payne Mountain, whatever they're called now, um, does this, does, are any of these, um, and, um, appetizing to you? Or, you know, Jody, do any of these, you know, fit within CBCC's vision? You know, and, and sort of do that with, like, this is a slate that we're considering. You know, would you be interested in sort of signing on to any of these?
So as I said, two weeks ago, two weeks ago, when I gave that presentation, we have had conversations at the superintendent's table about the BOCs idea and the, um, mental health kind of facility. Um, and there is no desire from other superintendents. That's why I was asking, like, what kind of evidence does the board need for that? Like, I can shoot, shoot an email so that people can see actual words that superintendents say, but, um, or maybe not, and say, this is what they replied with. The only one I have not, I have not asked Jody directly if she'd be interested, and that was the only one that has not come up for conversation before. So that's why I was asking, like, what more evidence? Cuz I talked of that last time. The other thing I did do, because it was a question that was asked at the last meeting, was the magnet schools in Burlington and the language immersion school in Jericho. The question was asked of how many tuition kids have they gotten, or kids who are tuitioned into those building programs over the years that they've been. So I asked John Alberdini, who's the superintendent in Mount Mansfield, and I asked, um, Tom, who's the superintendent in Burlington, how many kids they have gotten for tuition money for, for those programs. John's answer was he has a waitlist within his district for the programming, and so he doesn't have any room for tuition kids. Um, and then, uh, Tom from Burlington's answer was, we barely can keep it afloat financially as it is. We've never gotten a tuition kid for anything in our district, nor has there been any request for it.
They, they barely can keep the magnet school itself, right, afloat, I see.
So we, I did get an answer to that question from, because it was asked and I didn't know the answer last time, so, um.
And so, but, the language immersion, that's the one that there's a waitlist?
Within district.
Within district, so there's not even an option to get to it.
He didn't, yeah, so he, he said, we've never put it out there.
And then what, Sustainability Academy? What are the magnet schools in?
I only know the Sustainability Academy. I don't know what the other one, I think there's another one, but I don't know what it's called.
Cuz it's like, there's two very different answers, and the, the magnet schools themselves are, are very different.
Yeah, and that's what we were taught, like, the question was, could we get enough kids to, to tuition into the school to make the, it cost-effective? I believe was the question. And the town of Burlington, which is a metropolis compared to, compared to Montpelier even, to Montpelier and Roxbury, has never received a request for kids to transfer in and pay tuition dollars. Like, their magnet programs that have been up and running for a long time have never attracted a child to their school district from another school district is what I was told. And that they're very expensive to run.
Maybe cuz I missed last week. I feel like I'm just gonna be the skeleton at the garden party and it's eight thirty, so maybe that's why, but I feel like it's a little bit of a slap in the face to the Roxbury community to talk about like magnet schools or language immersion and all these things when we had to make that really difficult decision to take away their elementary school. And then we're gonna then put something there instead that feels and also I, I'm like well aware that we had major budget challenges and we have them again next year, so I also feel like it's kind of a maybe not a slap in the face, but a little, it feels out of touch only to me. I'm only speaking as myself. It feels a little out of touch to talk about like adding to the budget or expanding a program. When we know that we have another really challenging budget season coming and we had to make that really hard and horrible, you know, that was really challenging decision last year, so I, I feel like very strange you've been talking about anything because we took away the elementary school, so why would we? I don't know. I guess that's sort of a question that.
Financial parameters.
Yes.
That's, well, that's the.
Well, not just money, but like, I just feel like from an emotional level, if I was a, if I was a family that lost our elementary school because it was, you know, for budgetary and like consolidation reasons, and then it's like, but then we're going to put in something else that we think, what, it doesn't sound like it's a revenue generator. I don't know, that just feels very sort of out of touch.
Like the advertisement, somebody says, I do want to run a daycare or something there, then it's like, it's something you do.
Well, then that, we can't do that, though. We have to sell it to Roxbury, and if they don't want it, then we sell it to someone else to daycare.
One of the options was a, a town, a community center where we have an after-school program and there's a.
See, that's different. What Brett was saying earlier sounds, if that's a Ro- Roxbury, that's great. I just feel like, like magnet, language immersion, that feels out of touch to me.
Yep.
Brett, this is, sorry, Brett.
Um, the presentation that we did didn't include the current educational use, which is as an after-school program for Roxbury kids, including a number of kids who never attended, some kids who never attended RBS, many kids who chose not to attend UES. Um, and I don't know if there's a way to have, but, to, to, to really sort of, I think that you had some finances in there.
A community center, after-school.
Yeah.
That, this would be inclusive of what's currently going on, as I understood.
Yeah. That would include that.
Yeah.
And so that's a possibility that the board should decide on, which continues to be an educational use, and it continues to be an after-school center. Potentially could even have a childcare center in it, which could bring revenue to the district as opposed to the town, potentially, which I don't know how much, and that's a hard thing to do. Um, but is an interesting idea also, because I know I've heard some folks that are concerned that taking ownership, so, you know, just a couple of folks are concerned, taking ownership of the building to, to the town without a good plan could be, could be harmful. Um, then, but, you know, asking, you know, the district that put the bill also seems, you know, it's like a challenging task as well. So with an educational use, it's not as difficult than that, I suppose. Not that we're making a decision on anything, but, there, you know, it's, I'm, I'm, I'm just really pleased to see how happy people are with what's happening in there, because on our last meeting, it was a Wednesday, and it had opened on a Tuesday. And it wasn't clear what it was gonna become or how much people would enjoy it, uh, as it is to me now.
That is, that is definitely one of the options. Scott.
Um, Libby, would it be possible for our next meeting in terms of like evidence to get like some projections based on the experience so far with the after-school program, um, like, are we likely to lose a lot of money, a little money, make a little money, make a lot, I doubt we're gonna make a lot of money, but, but, so that we can think about that as one of the potential, um, components of, of a use.
Yeah, Christina put that together. Um, I may have mentioned it last week, I may not have. It would, the, the after-school piece, just the after-school piece is approximately eighty to ninety thousand dollars would be added to our budget.
Plus maintenance of the building, right?
Yeah, we still, we maintain it, like, which is about sixty thousand dollars.
Did that also consider the current, um, mechanism for supporting families that's at the middle school?
It would be very similar.
It would be very similar.
Yeah.
So we're talking like a hundred and forty thousand dollars to, like, cap that via continued use?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, Christina ran those numbers for me already.
Just as it is right now. What you, what you put in the community center slide as ideas had a lot more going on, like.
Could be the date, you could rent it out to a daycare. Yep, we can rent it out to a daycare. There would not be nothing that could preclude, um, I don't know if that's the right word, but I know that they've talked about moving the library in there. Sure, why not? You know, like, there, there's lots of different things that could happen um, with that. And the more use that built, I just wanna like put it out there so it's not, so everybody's knowledgeable. The more use means more maintenance costs, so.
And administrative costs.
And administrative costs. Yeah, I think in the community center, I think I have it on that slide, that you'd wanna put a, you'd wanna put some sort of building manager on there to.
If there was stuff happening there all day long.
Yeah, yeah. Who, who would represent, who would work for MRPS, you know? Probably not a full-time position, I wouldn't imagine, but you'd want some sort of person running facility rentals and making sure that things get done and things are okay and all that kind of stuff.
So, oh, hard, and you have after-school enrichment, which I, the program that's currently running is, falls under that category. Are there other, like, after-school enrichment programs, I don't know, like a snowshoeing club or something like that, where, where, like, Montpelier kids might, like, take advantage of the bus going down, snowshoe in the afternoon, and then their parents come pick them up?
There's nothing that would stop that from happening now. Yeah. There's nothing that would stop that from happening now. Yeah.
So this is making me think of what could help with the question of what is the financial obligation? Slash tax impacts that the board will ask of the community is if we could get. Any more specifics, like, um, for the community center, you have, it's unlikely that the revenue would equal or surpass the expenses. But if there was a way for us to see, just like ballpark, like, well, we think it would cost this much annually to run it. And if that's, if the best ballpark for that is one and a half million dollars, because that's essentially the same kind of staffing as we would have had. Or if it's more, then it would be good to know that. Um, and then if it's possible for us to know. You know, again, ballpark revenue. Um, cause I think that would help us answer the question of the, of the financial piece.
So, yes, yeah, so if you added a part-time person, let's say that's gonna be forty thousand dollars.
I'm listening to answer it tonight. I'm thinking like, this is the.
I feel like next week or next meeting. And just to get some kind of clarity, it sounds like. It sounds like an email to Jody would be worthwhile, because that's, that's an asset that hasn't been had.
Yeah.
I am satisfied with your relaying of the conversation with the superintendents regarding BOSIs. Is the rest of the board satisfied or do we want an email? Does?
When you take your head, you say not satisfied or not?
I am satisfied with that.
Is, is anyone, does anyone dissatisfy?
I mean, I guess. I'm just curious, were these ever like legitimate options? Because it sounds like. They never were, the, the magnet type and the BOSIs. That's where I think I've gotten tripped up on this, that this was something that. Was something that was presented as, oh, it's something we could do. But now I'm hearing that because of lack of interest, it never really was. Is that how I should understand that?
I think that the board could tell me to say, push it. We want, we wanna do some sort of BOSIs there, push it. Find one partner in the region to do that. Um, and I could make an attempt to do that. I think the magnet schools is a legitimate question for the board. It's, but it goes under the parameters also. That's the board's decision. That is not my decision to make, so. Um, I think it is only fair to the board to have those options. So you can direct me into what you want to have happen and get feedback from community members in both towns. As to which direction the board wants.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, did we get a stream of people next week saying, actually, we would like to pay two million extra dollars to have foreign language? That's important to us as a community. If, if at least it puts it out there, so that's, yeah.
I, my. My thinking in response to that question, Tim, is that I think all of these are legit options. And because any of them could happen, and we're working our way through a process we've never done before. So we're trying to figure out how do we answer the question of. How legit is a magnet school or how legit is a BOSIs?
Yeah, and I think.
But at present, I guess our, our understanding is that we would have no partners for any of them. Is that accurate?
A- as of right now, right? With the information that you've learned.
Yeah.
The information I have right now, there is very limited desire because of the location of the school. And that's primarily the reason.
Well, that's, yeah, I guess that's, that is what it is then.
I might add, and, um, I do think a couple of years ago, these were all kinds of things that were swirling about. What the district would at any point in time in the future. Think about what would be an alternative use of that for sure. And then I think the last two years have really. Um, have changed the financial and taxpayer. Ramification. I, I think it was very much of interest of folks, even I think when the merger was being discussed. Like, what are some neat things we could do? And, uh, and so I don't think they're, you know, they're out of the realm. It's just the last two years has been a bit of a, um, dial back on what we can do.
Yeah, no, I, I would echo that. I, I think if, you know, two years ago, they were financially much more, more valuable than they are now.
I've said multiple times before, budget season last year, that I would love to think about that building. And what we could do, but the budget season has really changed.
Changed a lot.
Changed a lot of what we can do.
And the weights changed a lot. Right, yeah.
And, and from my perspective as a Roxbury person, that conversation was threatening and dangerous. And it creates uncertainty, which creates instability, which creates the possibility of losing teachers, which creates the situation that we ultimately. Came to quite quickly, which in some ways, once a conversation happens, the faster it happens is maybe. Uh, just, you know, and very unfortunately, the best for the, the elementary school students, the teachers. I mean, it's, I, that's something that I came to, but I don't know how many people agree to that. It's a tough conversation, but I did it and I always wanted to.
Yeah, and, and I think also, you know, just kind of going back to, to why they're in there. I think for the fairness of a community conversation, I mean, there are people who've been asking from day one, you know, why not a magnet school? And I, I think, you know, leaving it out of the conversation. At least, yeah, allows us people to ask those questions and kind of say, we didn't consider it. It also allows us to answer some of those questions as part of the process. Um. Do we have what we, it's, it's quarter and I, do we have what we need for October, what, second? Um.
So right now, I'll just say, we've, we've got our answer on regional interest, except for asking Jody if she thinks C V C C could use the building. We've asked for a little bit more ballpark revenue projections on the community center.
Yep.
Question, I don't know about any of the other ones, and expense projections on the community center. Um. Uh, what was the one just between, just above community center? Oh, central office. I think any expense projections on central office staff. As that option.
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
So I was just recapping and I have this in an email, but the, um, the things that we're asking you to do leaving this meeting. Are email Jody about seeing if C V C C could use the building. Revenue projections, um, for a community center. Ballpark, expense projections for community center and the central office staff option. Okay.
Are we still pursuing the central office thing that to me seems like? Not, not really.
I guess I'm just trying to not, well, I'm fine if that's what the board says. If, if we want to narrow these options down tonight. I wasn't sure if that's where the board was at, so what we were trying to do was just guide the conversation instead of. Making any decisions.
I mean, I, I don't think we should narrow anything down tonight until we've gotten public input. Um.
Right.
That said, I, I think we can say that the central office has some obvious problems and. Um, unless public input changes it, I don't think it's worth instructing our administration to do a lot more work on that.
Oh, okay, that's fine, fine with me. Okay.
Uh, table?
Yes.
Yes.
What's our table in conversation?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's at the fall festival, it's coming up next Saturday.
No, the twenty.
Right, next Saturday, next Saturday, not this Saturday, next Saturday, sorry. That's, thank you for the clarification, yes, in a week and a half, on the twenty eighth. Um, and the board, this is a great opportunity for, um, the board to be out and in the community. Go to where the community is instead of always asking them to come to us. And, um, so we have, um, a table reserved and we will be there. What I would love to do is have board members sign up for like a two hour shift to be at the table. And if we wanted to spend a little time tonight, thinking about any specific questions we wanna ask in the past, just to give you all a sense. We've asked things like, what do you think our priorities should be when we go, as we go into budget season? Um, we've asked for general feedback. We've asked, Rhett, you've, you've tabled a number of times with me. What are some other questions we've asked?
Uh. Well, we talked about priorities.
Yeah.
You know, we were doing the community outreach with Nathan, Nathan's work, that was part of it.
Right.
Um, do we have any specific social emotional questions? I mean, I think we would just, we might have put, we may have come to some priorities and then said, what do you think under these three priorities? Community outreach, social emotion, we could even ask that.
That's right.
You know, just academic.
How are we doing?
Yeah.
And these are our three priorities, how are we doing?
Yeah, or, and I would love to hear recommendations for improved community relations.
Yeah, what can we do? Yeah. So that's one idea, is to lay out what our top three things are and just ask the community to give us feedback on how we're doing at them. Um, another, I was wondering if we wanted to use that time and space to get any. Community input on the question of the Roxbury Village School Building. Um, another big topic of conversation that's been in the community for a while is the possibility of merging with Washington Central. We could say, what questions do you have about merging with Washington Central, about the possibility of merging? Um, or what thoughts? Yeah, I don't know. So anyway, just thought. Uh, to spend a little bit of time tonight, I realize we're already over our planned time.
I have loved to ask kids what's going well for them.
Yeah.
That has been a wonderful thing to do and see, um, I think that's.
I feel like longer lunch and recess would. Somebody, oh, you bring our pets to school. We got lots of feedback that we should bring, we should be able to bring pets to school.
Pets to school, that's right.
So I am, I'm going to be away, so I'm not gonna be able to table. I do think having, um, like a Q R code with a, with a form that collects. So that the only opportunity is like to talk to people in the moment. Um, yeah, just multiple ways of gathering information, um, I think would be helpful. And I'm happy to set up that form and Q R code if that would be welcome.
The high school kids, um, farmer's market like fifteen years ago and they can statistics. Um, did some surveying where they had people put dots on, like colored dots on the issues that they. I forget what they were asking about, but it was pretty slight. And they gathered some feedback that was wanting to put dots on that.
Nice.
What would we be asking them to put dots on?
Wait, I don't know, do you, do you think we should merge with Washington Central? I don't know. Um, whatever.
Yeah, you could do, um, what's the best way to, for the school board to communicate with the community and give choices?
Dots. Be one of the choices.
Yeah.
Could literally be put a dot on a dot.
Or, yeah.
Yeah.
Or what are your biggest priorities for the school budget?
Yeah.
Uh huh.
I think getting a question on the school budget would be great.
Cause we can put options out there and then people, yeah, but then we can put an other and they could write it in and put it out on their own.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, let's select the tax rate increase.
Jake's gonna find himself in the don't take. That's what's gonna happen.
Yeah, I was gonna say, who, who is gonna be the don't take? I, I am gonna be in Maine, so I.
I have a retirement party that night, so I told Natalie I couldn't.
Um.
Oh, yes.
Talk to Natalie.
I'm not that popular, but.
You don't have to be that popular.
There is the lineup on the door out front, but I'm sure they can, you can take my spot. I'm not in the lineup.
Okay, and then put volunteers. I've just, I've just been hearing people who can't be there. Thanks, guys. All right, Rhett, thank you. I'll follow up with you on timing.
I will be there.
Jay, oh, thank you, okay.
Thank you, yes.
I'll check in with Lynn and see if, and Miriam, how about you? I just heard, I heard something down there.
I have a conference meeting in the morning, but it's a good for me too, so I might be there with my team.
Oh, yeah, my kid, my kid's running in that. I'm gonna try and do both, gonna go cheer him on and then I got it.
Yeah, I think I might try and get my team to go, because we were supposed to, I don't know, Natalie really wants to go.
Yes, yeah, you gotta come. It's so fun. The fall festival is so fun. How about you, Tim? Can you join us?
I gotta check one thing on the calendar that's unclear to me, but I think so.
Awesome. And it doesn't have to be for the whole time. The, the festival goes from twelve to four, but we can break it up.
Yeah, should be able to make some time in there.
That's so great. I think we have what we need. We can definitely work with this to get good input from using this as an opportunity to get good input from the community. I'm gonna hit you up for that Q R code for sure. I have no idea how to get that.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's what Sharp is important.
Yeah. See where it takes you. Um, do you have most new jar?
Some of them.
Second, positive ever. Thanks, everyone.